Meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 to order at 6:35 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilman Thomas Schmidt?
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley?
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis?
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff?
Present.
Attorney David Austin?
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson?
Here.
IT AJ Garcia? NICE Engineering Neil Simstad?
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf?
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen?
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman?
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel here.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of three members, myself, Robin Arvenitis, Tom Schmidt, and Kevin Conley. The first item on the agenda are the minutes of the October 8th, 2025 public meeting.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved, three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, do we have any additional claims for the Water Works Board meeting?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Claims are approved, three to zero. Do we have any reports from the staff regarding the Water Works Board meeting?
No reports, Madam President.
Any reports from council members regarding Water Works?
No.
Moving on, there are no reports, so moving on to old business. There is no old business. And moving on to new business. Item A, consider the acceptance of the Norfolk Southern License Agreement for proposed relocation of an existing unlicensed 12-inch encased PVC water line in an 18-inch steel casing pipe due to a future-grade separation bridge. Authorize the Director of Operations to sign the agreement and authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize execution of documents and submit payment for $14,675, the Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project.
Yes, this is for the Kennedy Avenue Project. This is an agreement between Norfolk Southern Railroad and the town. It would allow the town to replace the water line underneath the set of railroad tracks and allow it to exist there. Just as a requirement from them.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, three to zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I would like to call to order the Stormwater Board for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 at 6:38 PM. The roll call is different than the Water Works Board. It is myself, Tom Schmidt, and Robin Arvenitis only. The first item is the minutes of the October 8th, 2025 public meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Claims, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So move on claims.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, claims are approved. Reports, are there any staff reports regarding Stormwater Board?
No reports, Mr. President.
Any council member reports regarding Stormwater?
No.
Hearing none. Move on to old business. There is no old business. New business, there is no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Stormwater Board? Come on up, sir. Come on up to the podium. Come on up to the podium. State your full name and address.
My name is Serge Bolj, 634 Julie Drive. And I want to just say a couple of words about the water. I'm the landlord, I have rental property here in Shererville. Every time that people move out, I end up to pay the water, their water. Because they don't want to pay for the last couple of months if they know they're going to go out. And on top of that, right now, they owe me like $6,000. And he told me they don't want to pay rent, and they don't want to move out. And also, they owe a couple of months of water. So I get a court next week. But when they move out, I end up to pay the water because it's my property. So what I really wanted to, I want to kind of pay attention to you guys to know that you should use a deposit for the water where the people moves in to town to rent. You should have a deposit and keep deposit till the end. So that you can use that deposit to pay their water if they move out. Just to make example, in Crown Point, I'm managing duplex in Crown Point. Crown Point City, do that, just do that. When they move in, they get the deposit. When they move out, they use that deposit to pay the water. Why should I end up to pay their water and also they don't even pay me rent? And that's not right. So I just wanted to you to know that how I feel, and I'm sure that a lot of other landlords feel the same way. And also on top of that, they make all kinds of damage. Three years ago, they cost me $15,000 to fix that for the people who move out. But that's not my problem to tell you tonight, that I just want to make sure that the water, they should pay their own water. I don't have to end up to pay their water. And I appreciate it very much for listening to me, and thank you very much. At the same time, I apologize on my language because I kind of speak in broken English.
I understood you perfectly.
I very apologize for that.
You're just fine. Yep, I understood. Thank you.
And my suggestion is, when the people moves in, charge them a couple hundred dollars or whatever for deposit and keep the deposit till he moves out, then you give him back or pay the water. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, have you met with our staff to discuss your issue? Have you got in to see staff to talk to them about your issue?
No, I just, I stopped at the office there and I just talked to them, but they only collected it. They know, they told me they can't do nothing.
Yeah, that might fall under the clerk's office. But you haven't been in to talk to anyone about it.
I talked to them today. One of the girls that are working, I even asked her where the meeting, so I can come here and let you guys know what's happening. And I did that before, last year I do that. I do that every time that happens, I talk to them. But that people just work there, and he told me nothing they can do. He says that's a rule, and we don't have a deposit, and you end up to pay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It just falls into what the gentleman was talking about, is collecting a deposit for new water service. And we do not collect any deposits currently. We did years ago.
Used to.
We used to, and then we found out it was more of a challenge than anything to refund those back. And so the council at one point eliminated those deposits taken in for new service. So if there was a need to move forward with a deposit for everyone, I don't know if we can just be selective, Attorney Austin, on doing it for renters only and not everyone else. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm intimately aware of this, and you're exactly right as to why the town council at the time, or the Water Board at the time, eliminated that policy. We're regulated by the IURC. This is part of our rate tariff and order. The process would start there if there were any desire to make a change in that policy and/or fee collection. So it would start there. Beyond that, the mechanics of who gets what. Because if somebody other than the deposit giver is the recipient of monies on the backside, then there is a gap of who should have gotten the money and/or who should have been reimbursed. So there's some mechanics to it that exist in the law and practically.
So we can investigate it some more. This would be a Water Works Board issue, though, to address, not the Stormwater Board. But thank you for bringing it to our attention. We will look into it more to see if there's a possibility for, I guess, exploring landlords only or tenant properties only to be able to do that.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor regarding Stormwater Board? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. The time is 6:45 PM. The Redevelopment Commission consists of the entire town council. The minutes of the October 8th, 2025 public meetings?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes five zero. For claims, they'll entertain a motion on the claims listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Troxel?
Yes, there was one additional claim. Item D would be Reardon Consulting Services invoice dated 10/31/25 for $4,790.25.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. President, I'd like to know the certain services being charged for in the Reardon Consulting invoice for this month. I'd like to know who requested the tax analysis that was done for that invoice, and whether that was an approved charge by our staff, by our administration, whether that's something that we should be paying for at this time. So I'm a no until we have further information on that issue.
Mr. Reardon, can you explain? Can you step up?
Good evening. Councilman, I appreciate your question. You originally presented it to us in the form of an email, which we responded. We undertook that study as part of our scope of work under the current contract, given the continued conversation of the Illiana project budget and renewed conversation of the real estate, pardon me, the proposed commercial component to the Illiana project. That report highlights four specific commercial districts in the town. And again, we felt that it was our responsibility, part of our obligation, to do that report for the council to help you make your decision.
So to, I guess, just to boil that down, I want to make sure I understood. It was not something that was requested of you guys to do by administration or anyone? This was something you took upon yourself to do and perform that analysis in your interpretation of your contract?
That is correct. It's part of our scope of work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Troxel, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Conley?
No.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Passes three to two. Moving on, any reports from staff on redevelopment?
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council members? Okay, new business, consider acknowledgement of the 2026 Redevelopment Commission's spending plan to be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance. Is it Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President. As I emailed you, this particulars report is before you. In 2023, the state legislature passed House Enrolled Act 1454, which requires redevelopment commission to submit a spending plan for the upcoming year. We did this last year for 2025. The Town Manager and Director of Operations and myself met regarding what those expenditures will be for the redevelopment for 2026. And that report is before you now. Once it's, if it's adopted this evening, then it will be uploaded to the state gateway portal before December 1st, which is the due date.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Troxel?
No.
entertain a motion or discussion?
Mr. President, Mr. Troxel, this is standard procedure for you?
Yes, it was, it was in 2023 is when they passed it. And 2025 was the first spending plan that needed to be submitted. So this is the second time we're doing this.
Move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. All right, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? You know the drill.
Kevin Dean, 1905, Sir Richard Road in Shererville. Mr. Reardon was up here. I've seen some of the presentations he made to the Park District about this development. I think it's an extreme amount of money that the town of Shererville is looking to spend on developing this property. My real problem here is originally, Reardon was granted, I think, $93,000 or $97,000 to do this. Then that came in, and it looked like they were getting another $15,000 to do it. Now it looks like there's another $5,000. I'd really like to know how much more money is Reardon going to be charging the town of Shererville for this, and how much have they been paid already? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call a Utility Board meeting for November 12th, Wednesday, November 12th, at approximately 6:51 PM. The roll call stays the same as the redevelopment. All five members are on the Utility Board. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the October 8th public meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel, for Utilities?
There is one additional claim, Mr. President. Item L for Hassy Construction Company invoice dated 10/31/25 for $93,689. And this is in reference to the BioStor's building project that's going on currently.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't hear the amount.
Is $93,689 even.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Gorman, on Utilities?
No reports, Mr. President.
Our Public Works Director, any reports?
Nothing to report.
And Town Engineer, any reports?
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any reports from council members?
None.
No reports. We have no old business. We'll move right into new business. Item A is Resolution 2025-12 is a resolution approving the termination and joint withdrawal of the towns of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and St. John, Lake County, Indiana, from their joint interlocal cooperation agreement for ownership and utilization of a sewer inspection system trailer mounted with optional Sony video printer by and between the towns of Shererville and St. John, authorizing disposal of property acquired by the towns under an agreement pursuant to applicable law for closure, withdrawal, and termination under IC 36-1-7 and all related matters. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this is between the towns of St. John and Shererville. In approximately 2001, we purchased a camera trailer system together. And since it has been no longer needed, St. John purchased their own, and we're in the process of doing the same. So it's appropriate to withdraw from this interlocal agreement. We've been working with St. John for the last six months to a year to get this done.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-12.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item B is consider acceptance of the Norfolk Southern License Agreement for proposed relocation of an existing sewer due to a future-grade separation bridge. Authorize the Director of Operations to sign the agreement and authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents and submit payment for approximately $17,000. And this has to do with the Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this is similar to the Water Board. Same concept, except for this is the sewer. We don't have the agreement back yet, but it'll be similar in cost. We're estimating $17,000. So I just need approval to sign off on it and pay it, and then I can, I can report next month on the actual amount.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, is there any business from the floor regarding Utilities? Any business from the floor regarding Utilities? No business from the floor, this meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the Town Council meeting.
I'd like to call the Town Council meeting to order for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. It looks like it's about 6:57. Roll call will stay the same as the Utility Board. So we'll go to the minutes of the October 8th, 2025 public meeting. Pleasure to the board.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure to the board.
So move on claims.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Reports, Jim, if you don't mind going around?
Sure, Mr. President. Bob Patterson, Fire Chief, any reports?
Yes, I'd just like to report for the month of October, our fire department responded 261 EMS-related calls, 70 fire-related calls, for a total of 331 calls for the month of October. And that is all the reports I have.
Thank you. Mr. Simstad, Town Engineer?
No reports.
Mr. Nandorf, Public Works Director?
Thank you. Good evening. I got a couple of things to report on tonight. So the state has eliminated parts one and two for the CCMG program as they've had in the past couple of years. So there's going to be one part starting in 2026. Okay, so we submitted for that one part, and that included 22 road segments in the following subdivisions. The Northwood subdivision, Foxwood Villas.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chad, I can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Yeah, can you get closer, closer to the mic?
That's a rarity. All right, let me go again.
Can you, can you go back to what you said on your first statement?
So you know, every year, there was two parts for the CCMG, parts one and two. You approved 2025-1, which will be done in 2026, and the new 2026 by itself, we just put in for 22 road segments. And they include streets in Northwood subdivisions, Foxwood Villas, two streets in Shored Forest, three streets in the Hugo Hills subdivision, Lincoln Anna, Trenta Parkway, and Helena and Lincoln Knolls, Pineview Lane, the north section of Harvis Drive of Route 30, and the Lewis Alleyway in Schilling. This work will be performed in 2026 if approved by the state, which we should hear something in December, along with the 2027, excuse me, along with the 27 road segments that were already approved earlier this year. So 49 total road segments will be worked on in 2026. The update on the Burr Street reconstruction project, the curb work has been completed except for one residential driveway across from the American Legion. 13 new trees were planted last week on Friday and Saturday. Remaining stone base will be added hopefully by the end of the week. And they are set to start binder and paving next Wednesday. It's getting late for this thing, and I talked to the construction superintendent today, and they're going to get this thing going on Wednesday with the asphalt work. There's a little more concrete work left, but we're getting there. So the final thing I had to talk about was Jim and Andy and myself appeared before the Little Cal UMed Advisory Board. There was a funding opportunity through them, and we submitted for $140,000 to add the three stormwater stations to the new water department SCADA system. We did a presentation, we're looking for a 50% match from the Little Cal, so their share would be 70,000. The town would come up with 25%, and for $35,000, and Lake County Drainage or the Surveyors Office would cover the other 35,000 with a 25% share. So we're waiting to hear back. We'll appear before the executive Little Cal Board whenever they tell us we can appear. And that's all I have. You guys have any questions?
How long will the paving on Burr Street take if they start on Wednesday?
They're hoping it will be done by that Friday, three days.
Thank you.
The weather looks better.
The what was?
The weather looks better.
Yeah.
Yeah, that delayed everything. That delayed everything. Thank you, Mr. Nandorf.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
No reports, you'll hear enough from me today.
All right, thank you. I do have one report. I'd like to, I'm going to call on Mr. Troxel, our Clerk Treasurer, to talk about our insurance premium holiday, if you would, sir?
Yes, thank you. Yes, A Medical Trust, which is our insurance carrier for our health insurance for our employees, has collected excess cash reserves that were not needed. So they are giving every municipality that's in the trust, which is 76 of them, in November, a premium holiday of medical premiums. So no employee will be charged any premiums for the month of November. In addition to that, with your approval, council, the Vision and Dental, which totals $1,200 for the month of November, which is the premiums that are paid, would also be asked if you guys would waive those also for the month of November. So.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
This is a, thank you. This is the second time that A Medical Trust has been giving a premium holiday. The first one was in January of 2021. So within the last four and a half years, they've given two premiums back, and that's based on the health of the trust and claims history. So the trust is very conservative in how they handle things, and this is a benefit of being conservative, that there's money to be given back to all the employees for this particular month, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
That was it, Mr. Getzloff, thank you.
Any comments from council members?
Nope.
Okay. Chad, I do have one thing. I'd like to say thank you to you and the crews that drove all night cleaning streets when the weather was very bad that night. So nice job in cleaning up the town.
Thank you, yeah. It's all, it's all in those drivers' hands behind those trucks. They got it fast, they cleaned it up efficiently, got some mailboxes down, we're working on getting them things fixed for the people that had theirs damaged. So guys did a hell of a job.
Very good, thank you.
Some really heavy snow, and throwing it off the side was, was bound to cause some old mailboxes to fall down.
I tried to tell them to slow down. They get a little, they get a little hyped up that first storm of the year, but we got it cleaned up pretty fast, looked good.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done.
At this time, I will pay, take any public comments regarding the agenda items tonight? Any comments regarding the agenda items tonight? Any comments on the items on the agenda tonight? Seeing or hearing none, the floor is now closed. Under old business, ordinance number 2031 is an ordinance amending the miscellaneous town and police department fee schedules for release of towed vehicles and unclaimed vehicles. vehicles, repealing Town Ordinance Number Sixteen Eighty-Eight and Town Ordinance Number Nineteen Ninety-Three and all matters related thereto. This is the second reading. Andy?
Yes, as you said, this second reading comes from the Board of Safety and a five-o recommendation. It raises the tow release fee from forty dollars to fifty dollars, and also does the same for the unclaimed vehicle fee.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
This is an adoption, right?
Yes.
Adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Two is an ordinance amending fees for police department incident reports, accident reports, photographs, vehicle identification numbers, checks, and electronic capture information, and repealing Town Ordinance Number Fifteen Thirty-Three and Town Ordinance Number Seventeen Thirteen and all matters related thereto. This is the second reading. Andy?
Again, the second reading from last month. This raises all the miscellaneous fees under this ordinance, accident reports, photographs, and audio and videos, and this mostly pertains to the new body camera footage and vehicle footage as well.
Okay, thank you.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
We haven't heard that in a while.
Can you guys make sure your phones aren't near the microphones? That will cause interference.
Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Three is an ordinance repelling Town Ordinance Number Twelve Sixty-Six, Town Ordinance Number Twelve Sixty-Six-A, Town Ordinance Number Twelve Sixty-Six-B, Town Ordinance Number Fifteen Seventy-Three, Town Ordinance Numbers Fifteen Seventy-Eight-A, Town Ordinance Number Sixteen Oh Eight, Town Ordinance Sixteen Oh Eight-A, Town Ordinance Number Seventeen Twenty-Six, Town Ordinance Number Seventeen Fifty, Town Ordinance Number Seventeen Twenty-Five, Town Ordinance Number Nineteen Thirty-Three, Town Ordinance Number Nineteen Fifty-Six, and Town Ordinance Number Nineteen Fifty-Six-A of the Town of Shererville, and replacing the same by adopting and establishing a personnel policy for the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana. This is second reading. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is just an update. This was also on the agenda last month, and we're just looking for an adoption of that personnel policy.
Okay, pleasure the board.
Motion to adopt Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Three.
Second with a comment, Mr. Chairman. What, Town Ord, Jim, is it Town Ordinance Seventeen Twenty-Five or Nineteen Twenty-Five?
You mean the, one of the ones we're repealing?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I would think it's the one listed.
It's nineteen twenty-five. That's what I'm saying. Mr. Getz, Mr. Getzoff said seventeen twenty-five.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's nineteen twenty-five.
Very good, Tom. You're listening good.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Under New Business, I will, going to turn this public hearing over to Mike now.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Four is an ordinance providing for reduction in appropriations and administration, other equipment, and park non-reverting community events of the Town of Shererville for twenty twenty-five. This is a reduction in both the administration, other equipment, and park non-reverting, and it is the, the DLG recommends making these reductions of appropriated funds that will be unused in a budget year that's appropriated. The process ensures transparency and compliance with state laws and fiscal management guidelines. Once passed by the council this evening, the ordinance will be uploaded to the Department of Local Government Gateway Portal and complete the, to complete the process. This was advertised in the paper regarding this reduction, and we're following the same protocol that we would for an additional appropriations. But basically, by reducing these appropriations that we stated we were going to spend at the beginning of the year, we're not going to spend them now, so by reducing them now out of the budget for the next six weeks, it will help our twenty twenty-six budget. As we know, you know, Senate Enrolled Act Number One is affecting every community, every taxing entity in, in Indiana, and we are be looking at some reductions here. So this will help with our budget process for next year when the DLGF reviews everything in December.
Okay, thank you. Do we have to open the floor?
You do.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor regarding Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Four for any comment? Any comment? Any comment? Seeing none, hearing none? The floor is now closed. So on Ordinance Twenty, pardon?
Two readings.
Oh, two readings, okay. So we're just looking for approval on that and adoption.
And adoption. You can have two readings tonight if you have unanimous consent.
Motion to approve Twenty Thirty-Four?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Five is an ordinance regarding regulations, installation, and use of automatic and manual alarm systems in the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, repelling Town Ordinance Number Nine Seventy-Seven, Town Ordinance Number Ten Eighty-Three, Town Ordinance Number Twelve Eleven, and Town Ordinance Number Thirteen Eighty-Five-A and all matters related thereto. Andy?
Um, yes, all of the next few ordinances all relate to miscellaneous fees in the town that haven't been reviewed in quite some time. So we're going through, reviewing all those, bringing them up to today's standards, and trying to simplify them. So for this one in particular, this updates the ordinance related to technology changes as well as fee changes for the police department alarm systems to reflect the current costs of, of running that.
Okay. Pleasure the board?
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Five. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Six is an ordinance amending Town Zoning Ordinance Number Twenty Oh Four, as amended, the same being as ordinance cla, cla, I'm sorry, classifying, regulating, and redistricting in the, in the location heights, area bulk, and use of buildings and structures, and the use of land in the Town of Shererville for said purposes, dividing the town into districts, and all matters related thereto. Planning Commission Case Twenty Five Dash Eleven Twenty-One, petitioner, Town of Shererville, James Gorman, Town Manager, location is one forty-three West Joliet Street. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a rezone of parts of the properties that we bought over the last several years. This one in particular is right along Joliet Street, and he's got his cursor right over it. There used to be a house there. We bought the house. We tore the house down, and that is currently zoned R-two, and in order to put a fire station like we plan on doing on this parcel, it's got to be zoned institutional, so that's why we're rezoning that parcel in particular. And then, so that's on that one, and then the next item. I can go over that right now, too, if you'd like, or, or you can vote on this one.
We'll vote on this first.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, I'm opposed to this rezoning. I've, I've been opposed to this location for the fire station. I just want to stay consistent. I think this is not an appropriate location. I think it's not an appropriate expenditure at this time. I just think it's a process that we, we shouldn't be going through currently. Thank you.
Okay. All right, pleasure the board. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Motion is four one. Okay. Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Seven is an ordinance amending Town Zoning Ordinance Number Twenty Oh Four, as amended, the same being an ordinance clas, cla, classifying regulations and redistricting the location, height, area, bulk, and use of buildings and structures, and the use of land in the Town of Shererville for said purposes, dividing the town into districts, and all matters related thereto. Planning Commission Case Twenty Five Dash Eleven Dash Twenty-Two, petitioner is the Town of Shererville, James Gorman, Town Manager, location zero point three seven oh acre parcel east of one hundred and forty-ninth Joliet Street and south of Joliet Street. Rezone for residential R-two to institutional zoning district, INST classification, Planning Commission favorable recommendation six zero. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Andy has his cursor on this particular parcel. It's behind. It's just south of one thirty-five Joliet Street. It was also R-two, and we'd like that rezoned to institutional. Once we get this completed, then we'll, we will do a one-lot subdivision through the Plan Commission to make all of these lots that are outlined in orange or yellow, whatever that is, a one-lot subdivision, and then we'll move on to the next step after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move, move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Hearing none. I was just going to say, same, same argument, but we can go for it. Thank you.
All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Eight, an ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number Eighteen Thirty-Six, being an ordinance establishing and adopting a fee schedule for the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana Community Center, repealing all ordinances and town code sections or portions thereof in conflict herewith and all matters related thereto. Andy?
Uh, yes, the next three of these ordinances are all related to the Parks Department. Uh, this one is amending the community center rental fees to cover costs while still being competitive with the surrounding towns. Uh, the Parks Department did a study to come up with these new, new amounts that are proposed.
Pleasure the board?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Two readings.
Two readings.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance Number Twenty Thirty-Nine is an ordinance of the Town Council of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, amending Ordinance Number Nineteen Forty-Eight, being an ordinance of the Town Council of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, amending the shelter, athletic fields, and mobile band shell rental procedures and fees, as well as hours of park and public restroom facilities available in the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, repealing all ordinances and town code sections or portions thereof in conflict herewith, and all matters related hereto, repealing all ordinances and town codes, sections, or portions thereof in conflict herewith, and all matters related thereto. Andy?
Yes, this is similar to the last one. This is just for the shelter and the athletic field fees. Again, they compared it to surrounding towns and, and to cover costs for these items.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Nine?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for discussion, Andy, can you explain the part that says, well as, as hours of park and public restroom facilities availability?
So this is the ordinance that has that in there. All we're doing is amending the fees in this one. Part of the ordinance had the hours in there. We're not amending that. That's just staying in there.
So do we have set hours of our public restrooms?
Yes.
And, and they're staying the same?
Yes. The only thing that changed on this is the fees.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt Ordinance Twenty Thirty-Nine?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Ordinance Twenty Forty is an ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number Fifteen Eighty-Nine, being an ordinance establishing activity fee schedules for the Town Department of Parks and Recreation, and all matters related thereto, and repealing all town code sections or town ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Andy?
Yeah, again, this is for the Parks Department. It's amending the activities fees to reflect the current costs of operating. It also removes some of the older programs that were in there that are no longer being utilized.
Okay.
Motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Forty?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Consider release of two-year maintenance surety and issue certificates, certificates of release for the following. Burr Ridge Subdivision Phase Two in the amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Burr Ridge Subdivision Phase Two in the amount of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. Burr Ridge Subdivision Phase Four in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Burr Ridge Subdivision Phase Five in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, and Burr Ridge Subdivision Phase Five in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, this is the Burr Ridge Subdivision, Public Works Department, mainly Chad, and Robinson Engineering. They completed the final inspection. All the punch list items were completed, so it is appropriate at this time to release the surety bonds on everything, and this project is closed now. We own the streets, sewers, the water, et cetera. Thank you.
Pleasure the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Consider approval of the purchased property located at eighty Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from Pedro and Sirma Bastia, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, land and temporary, temporary easement, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and the Town Attorney to finalize execution of documents. Um, yeah, execute, yeah, okay. Kind of lost my spot there. Sorry about that. Of Phase Three, Parcel fourteen Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Andy?
Um, yes, this is for Kennedy Avenue, Phase Three, Parcel fourteen, shown on purple on the screen here. Uh, it's in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, the amount was based on the appraisal and a supplemental amount based on comparable properties in the area. Uh, this is purchasing right-of-way and temporary right-of-way for the Kennedy Avenue expansion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second. Any discussion?
I guess I just want clarification. Our agenda says thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. You just said forty-one thousand something. What's, what's going on?
Who did? Who said forty-one?
I did.
Andy did.
Oh, okay.
Let me clarify that. Maybe skip that one for now. Let me clarify.
Would you like to go to the next item? We'll come back to that one?
Sure.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, consider release of portion of cash for crude car wash, re-subdivision of lot one, low subdivision. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works performed an inspection and a release of fifteen thousand sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents of the cash surety for public improvement installation and implemented two-year surety. That is appropriate at this time.
Okay. Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
I just want clarification on the amount. I didn't write it fast enough. What was the amount of the surety?
I'm sorry, fifteen thousand sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next one is consider acceptance of North Folk Southern license agreement for proposed relocation of the existing unlicensed twelve-inch encased PVC waterline in an eighteen-inch street casing pipe due to the future grade separation bridge. Authorization, authorizing the director of operations to sign the agreement and to authorize town manager, the director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents and submit payment for fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project from Waterwork Board Agenda, so we don't have to bother Jim or Andy. Just need to vote.
Move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Andy, do we want to just defer aye to next month?
I found it.
Okay.
Go back to it.
We can go back to it now if you'd like.
Yep. Okay.
So item aye is incorrect on the agenda. It should be forty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. Forty-one thousand three hundred dollars even.
And this is per appraisals?
Per the appraisals, and they provided some comparable properties in the area, so it's based on that as well.
We can still use the negotiated amount.
Correct.
Yep.
Move the approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion?
There was already a motion and a second.
All right, motion and a second, so, okay. We got clarification, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Andy. Sorry about that.
No, I'm glad you caught that. I didn't catch it.
Okay, consider acceptance of North Folk Southern license agreement for the proposed relocation of an existing sewer due to future grade separation bridge, authorizing the town, authorizing the director of operations to sign the agreement and authorize town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents, submit payment for approximately seventeen thousand dollars. Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project from Utility Board Agenda. Pleasure, the board?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of engagement letter with LWG CPAs to study emergency vehicle service rates and charges in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Andy?
Yes, this is, will allow London Winnie Group to do a financial analysis of the ambulance fees assessed by the Sherreville Fire Department to make sure costs incurred are being covered by the assessed rates and make recommendations for changes as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Mr. Hanson, and what will that consist of?
They'll review what our current costs are. So obviously, I think the last time this was done is in twenty nineteen, so before COVID, so costs from COVID till now have changed drastically, so they're not covering costs for this. So this will help also along with Senate enrolled Act One, this will help cover some of those costs.
So they'll eventually increase the charges?
If I had to give you a guess right now, I would say yes.
And Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, this was done, as Andy said, back in nineteen, and it's a cost of service study. They analyze all of the information that our fire department does regarding an ambulance call and factor those in to see if our rates are current or not, or if they need to be increased. And if there's justification for an increase, then they'll come before the board here to recommend those increases.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the board?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider variance of use to allow baseball softball training facility within the US forty-one commercial corridor overlay district. Board of Zoning Appeal case twenty-five dash ten dash fifteen, petitioner is SC Hamilton Enterprises LLC, Shawn Hamilton. Location, eight fifteen Willowbrook Drive Boulevard Square, Lot One, BZA favorable recommendation four oh. This was taken at the ten twenty-seven twenty-five meeting. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, currently DBAT was over by the Old Ashley Furniture. They had a section of the Old Ashley Furniture, and then Floor and Decor came in, bought the building. They're gonna run their business out of there, so they kind of told DBAT they gotta go. And Al Krieger had an opening in his other building, the Old Menards, in between Sky Zone and the Liquor Store, Lico. So they're going in there. It's a much better facility, it's taller, it's more appropriate for what they have and the business they're trying to run, and it's a very good plan that they went through. And we don't allow baseball training facilities, so that's why they had to go in for the BZA. Thank you.
All right. Pleasure, the board?
Move the approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of change order number one from Milestone Contractors North Incorporated for the Community Crossing Matching Grant twenty twenty-four dash one project in the credit amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents. Andy?
Yes, this is a balancing order for Milestone Contractors North for Community Crossings Matching Grant twenty twenty-four dash one project. The amount came in twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents under, so this will be a credit. And this is just a balancing order that we need to prepare to send to INDOT so we can finalize this project.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider donation to Sherreville Baseball League in the amount of one thousand dollars. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is the same amount that was requested last year. It was gonna be used for equipment, uniforms, umpires, baseballs, and indoor training in the winter. That was on their application.
Okay. Pleasure, the board?
Move the approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second with discussion.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure this is a donation. Is Sherreville Baseball League not a donation to an individual team in the Sherreville Baseball League?
It is donated to the Sherreville Baseball, that's who the checks made out to, but I believe it is for one individual team.
Yeah.
Sherreville Sharks, right?
Correct.
It's top tier now.
Yeah, they have a new name, and it's the same application as last year.
Yeah. Then further discussion. I think this is bad precedent to do a donation to an individual team. Every single team in the town of Sherreville should get the same donation. I think this is inappropriate for us to do. It's bad precedent, so I'm gonna, I second it, but I'm opposed to this.
You're withdrawing, you're second. Yes?
Sure, yes.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Consider donations to Logan's Love. Logan speaks in the amount of five hundred dollars. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a new donation request for five hundred dollars. I talked to Georgianne, who submitted the application for Logan's Love. She was unable to be here tonight because of another commitment. Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you guys have any questions related to this donation request, we got somebody here that can speak on it.
Very good.
Move the approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you do. Consider acceptance of donations of three thousand four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Mr. Troxel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, these donations were for the month of October. The Town Hall Office received from Tim Lawhead, twelve donuts, four Danish from Rise and Roll. They're in-kind donations, about thirty dollars. Jersey Mike's also donated four coffees and a half a dozen donuts. That value in-kind was twenty dollars, so total Town Hall Office donations were fifty dollars. To the Willow Fund, AES Restaurant Foundation, Inc., donated one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. To the Animal Control Donation Fund, we have all in-kind, I'll read the in-kind. Gwen donated towels, value ten dollars. Joe, cat litter, value twenty dollars. Bill, laundry soap and dog treats, fifty-three dollars. Anonymous Blankets and Food Bowl, thirty-five dollars. Mario, bed and blankets, one hundred dollars. Anonymous Towel Bowl and Leftovers, ten dollars. Anonymous Sheets were five dollars. Julie donated sheets and dog food, twenty-five dollars. And Anonymous Dog Bed Food Jacket and Blanket, sixty dollars. Jerry S. donated fresh pet food, twenty-eight dollars. Krueger's Family donated blankets and towels, thirty dollars. Kathy Deco canned puppy food, value at thirty-six dollars. Hoffman Family Dog Food and Blankets, forty dollars. Kathleen donated Dawn Dish Soap, value twenty dollars. Anonymously, we received Dawn Dish Soap also, value twenty dollars. Bill donated dog treats, dog feed, and paper plates, value seventy dollars. Anonymously, we also received towels, sheets, and Dawn valued at fifteen dollars. And anonymously, wet dog food in-kind value of a hundred dollars. So total in-kind to Animal Control, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. To the VIP Donation Fund, Joyce and Dennis Mills donated fifty dollars. To the Police Patrol Donation Fund, Amy Curran donated twelve assorted mini cakes from Nothing Bun Cakes. Thank you to the officers Burton and Watkins. That in-kind value was thirty dollars and fifty cents. Edward Hogan donated three Silvery Emergency Thermal Blankets. That in-kind value was eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents. The family of William Gibson donated pack of cookies, eighteen-pack Jimmy John's, one-third sandwiches, eighteen-pack chips. Thank you to Sergeants Jansen and crew. Then in-kind value is fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Papa John's donated seven large pizzas, two liters of pop, in appreciation for the officers. That in-kind value was one hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-three cents. The Hobart Animal Clinic donated annual eye exam of canine yeti. That in-kind value was six hundred dollars and seventy-five cents. Georgette de Puy donated five pounds of bag of gummy bears. That in-kind value was ten dollars. Stan Donuts donated one dozen assorted donuts. That value was twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Forge Ridge Academy donated fifty donuts. That value was fifty dollars. Total in-kind patrol, police patrol donations were nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-nine cents. A recap, total in-kind donations for the month of October, one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents. And total monetary donations were one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for a grand total, three thousand four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-four cents, thirty-nine cents, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we'll take any business from the floor, and we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes only. Any business from the floor? Any, okay. State your name and your address, sir?
Ira Zimmer, seventeen twenty South Park Avenue. I went to the planning commission meeting, I think it was November the third on a Monday. Was learning about the new fire station you'd like to build up here by the water tower on Anna Street, gonna run out on Joliet Street. I'm not sure, Mr. Gorman talked about the fact that you're gonna place it there because he did a feasibility study ten years ago. Wait a minute, ten years ago? I don't think Joliet Street was gonna be closed off in the plan, was it? I think you should probably consider a new feasibility study and the effects it's gonna have since they're not gonna be able to run west very quickly. I don't know what's wrong with our other fire department stations. I don't know why you can't utilize them the way they've been used. I haven't heard or saw anything that said that a building burnt down in Sherreville because of the placement of the fire stations. If they've been utilized like they have been, and you want to put a place up now that when they first thought about it, things have changed, I think you ought to reconsider it. It's also a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Any other comments from the floor? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Christina Valmakas, and I'm at seventeen oh seven Susan Drive in Sherreville, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of Logan's Love to thank you all for your donation. We appreciate it very much. But while I'm here, I just thought I'd mention an issue that I've noticed in my subdivision. I live on the corner of Susan Drive and James Witchin, and my boys stopped, the school bus picks them up around the corner, and every single day that I'm outside, people just blow through that stop sign. It happens daily if the kids are outside or if they're not outside, so I just want to bring that to you guys' attention. Maybe we can get like those lights that say, that light up the stop sign. I personally have witnessed an accident in Highland that was horrific due to somebody blowing through a stop sign, so I just thought I'd mention it since I was here.
What time does this school bus come?
About seven forty.
About seven forty. Jim, maybe get her address and get back with the chief?
Yep.
Maybe they can put a car out there and kind of slow things down.
I know exactly where she's talking about.
Yeah, thanks for letting us know.
Absolutely, thank you so much, and thank you guys so much for your support with Logan's Love. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you, have a good night.
Any other business from the floor? Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Colin Zagovic. I am the secretary for the Sherreville Firefighters Union Local four two seven nine. I was actually gonna speak on one thing, but I guess I'll make it two. Just so everyone knows, Station One that we are currently sitting at, sixteen fifty South Klein, is not right now suitable for where we are at. That station was built, I want to say back in the seventies or eighties. It was meant for a volunteer department at the time, have two or three people there. Currently, we are staffing four out of there. Our minimum is six. When we're at seven, there is usually three to four people there. That's also including our administration building that's attached to it. That building was, is not sufficient for our growth. We need a new station. Yes, there is a brand-new Station Three. Unfortunately, it's not staffed at all times, but a new central station that can accommodate the growth that we are expecting, especially with the new subdivision that's going down south, and the new subdivision that is being built up off of Burr, the Coyote Run. The station that we're in right now, twenty-five years ago, we were told that we would be getting a new station. That was before my time, I get that, but right now, that station, one, the heat, the heat can't keep up in the winter, the air conditioning can't keep up in the summer. This year, multiple times, we had that station where, in the middle of the summer, AC gave out, and we had to move our operations over to Station Three. So Station One is not sufficient for where we're at right now and our expected growth as well. On a second note, December sixth is our, is our food drive for St. sixth is our, um, is our food drive for St. John Township. This, uh, I have spoken to Kathy LeRoux personally. She said that she has had a large increase in demands for the food pantry. I know the government shutdown is slowly stop, is coming to an end, but that disruption in the benefits and everything else like that, and paychecks have caused a larger need in the community. It's part of St. John Township. We're a part of it, obviously. Let's be a community that we are. We're out here to help. We're out here to help our community. When we're in the ambulances, we're in the fire trucks and off duty as well. So if anyone is available or is able to make a donation, food, dry goods, um, we also just post on Facebook, our social medias. I'm working on getting flyers out. I would like to post my, up at, uh, Town Hall here, Police Station, anywhere else that is town property. Love to put it up. It's from ten AM to two PM in the Stracks parking lot. We do this every year. But like I said, I talked to Kathy. There is a larger demand this year because of everything that's going on. Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? Before we close the floor, on behalf of the Town Council here, we'd like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and be safe, and we will see you back in, uh, December's meeting. This meeting's adjourned.